June seventeenth, do you want an electric board? Work session. Or chair, uh, meeting logistics. Bathrooms are out that way. The amount of emergency. Do what the security people say. Evacuation out and away from the building. And with that. We're good. I'm going to turn it over for our first agenda item, which is goal three P BPA products recommendations.
President Borowski, uh, thank you. Good evening. Um, this is Frank Lawson for the record, CEO and general manager. Joining me this evening are Brian Booth, um, our chief energy resources officer and Deborah Hart, who's assistant general manager and CFO. Uh, before we dove into the meat of the subject, I just wanted to do a couple of quick housekeeping items. I did want to introduce the board to Deidre Williams, um, who is sitting right over there. Um, she is our new chief people officer. So she's in charge of human resources, business continuity and safety for the organization. And see, she's been here about a month or so. So she's gently used, um, brand new, however you want to look at it, real excited to have her. She comes from Alaska, uh, worked for a utility in that area, a lot of operational background. So you'll get to know her a lot better and I'll make sure that I introduce her also to Commissioner Schlossberg, who is, um, excused on absence this evening. I'll make a note of that. Kind of the opposite of Deidre, I did want to also acknowledge, um, just recently Anne Caugh celebrated her fifteenth anniversary with E-Web. And so I wanted to acknowledge that while I had the opportunity. So congratulations and thank you, Anne. We will get into the, the subject matter. I, I also wanted to point out that, um, this is kind of a culmination of a lot of different people's work and acknowledge them. Um, many of the members from Brian's team, um, a few are here this evening. Um, Megan Capper and Jonathan Hart and Ben Ulrich are all here. Um, Aaron Orlowsky, who is part of our communications and outreach staff is in the back of the room. Wanted to acknowledge their, their work along with, uh, several members from Deborah's team, including Adam Rue, who's looked a lot of the financial issues. And then some of the areas that you don't often think about on our customer side. So, um, Julie McGahey's group, Anna Wade, some of the people you met with on the, on the, um, conservation side, looking, um, Juan Serpa Munoz, who's also involved in a lot of the, looking at, at the opportunities and impacts of, uh, energy efficiency, conservation, demand response and some of those things. So, uh, with that, we'll, we'll kind of dive right in. Um, this evening, just going to spend just a little bit amount of time on the background, not, not a lot. Uh, we'll focus mostly on the product recommendation and really the intention of a work session is to get your perspectives, uh, on the direction and the impact of the decision and, and information that you might want further. Um, so we'll, we'll run through this fairly quick, quickly. Um, this, this is, um, uh, it has been a journey, uh, for, uh, the board, um, as well as staff, uh, really wanted to, uh, acknowledge commissioners, uh, and your contributions throughout this process. This goes back, um, very specifically to 2021, when we started our first electrification studies. Um, it evolved into an energy resource study, or we called it the IRP at that time of 2023. You can see how kind, things have kind of picked up since then, uh, looking at the demand side. Uh, have really appreciated your thoughts and guidance and perspective along the way. Some of you, um, have, have recently been part of that. Some of you, in fact, all of, all of you, um, to one exception have been, uh, part of that entire journey. And so wanted to, to thank you for that. Um, really recognizing that we're, we're at a point now where we're, we're, um, making a key decision around a particular part of our supply chain. Um, it is a part of our supply chain. It's not, not the entire supply chain, but a very important part, both financially as well as strategically, uh, for the organization. Uh, one of the things that, uh, we've done really since the, the initial leaning, um, that we talked about at the beginning of May, we took a deeper dive into several different areas. The, the, the different colors here kind of represent some of the areas that we, we looked at further. Everything from, uh, some of the contract details, uh, the components that make up the pricing of, of the contract, how the contract in, impacts, um, operational aspects of how we manage our portfolio. For example, how we, uh, can manage, uh, and mitigate issues associated with, with peaking. So a lot of things are related to, um, how the contract has evolved and how that negotiation and the construct would work. Uh, we also, uh, looked at, um, some of the strategic alignment. Uh, we had a meeting with our community table led, led by, um, Aaron, uh, and, and Brian, who did some particular outreach to interested parties. Uh, several of us met with, with large key accounts as well, um, to try to, to get some, some broad perspectives on, um, the product, uh, the initial leaning. And, um, now, um, after learning some more about that, we'll, we'll be, we'll talk about our final recommendation coming up. As part of the process, as we've gone along, just a reminder, we kind of started out, there are four main product choices that we have from Bonneville. Uh, load following block, a what's called block with shaping and slice. There are some slight different versions of the, the block with shaping, depending on the kinds of peaking services that you want, uh, with Bonneville. There were really two product selection choices that kind of emerged as probably the top match for E-Web's particular situation. We were trying to, and have been wanting to balance flexibility on one hand with, uh, low cost, um, being able to handle different scenarios. Uh, and so, uh, uh, over the last several months, we've really been focusing on the load following option along with the block with shaping and the various options for peaking service that comes along with that. It's probably no surprise that those two really, uh, kind of emerged as the top candidates, uh, from an overall cost perspective, uh, when you look at sort of the characteristics of the products and that in particular, that orange area at the top, uh, which represents the, the cost of capacity or the amount of capacity in this case that E-Web would need to procure in the sense of, of looking at, uh, what the federal resource could do, what our net resources could do. And then what gap do we have to fill when it comes to our ability to meet our customers' demands at, at all time? And so the, the two that emerged, um, under the present, uh, load profile that we have, uh, we're load following and block with shaping with some peaking services. And so those, um, overall, the ability to meet that capacity, meet that peak demand, um, in the most efficient way, uh, was, um, the, the primary reason those two, uh, rose to the top as our, as our best candidates. The way that they function, uh, slightly differently, um, and we'll come back to this, um, uh, graphic, um, a little bit later, this is really the resource stack load with following. There's, uh, a net assumption that's made by Bonneville. On the left, that's the, the green area, the lower part of that, that chart. And then Bonneville fills in the rest up to a contract limit. And that's something that is kind of a key part of the discussion. And then on the right, uh, there's a little bit more flexibility for E-Web to use the resources in, in green. And then the peak use, uh, and leverage the peaking service, which is still a federal resource, tapping into the federal resource to accomplish the same thing, which is to meet, uh, your demand, uh, throughout the various periods. In this case, um, kind of a typical 24 hour graphic, um, as, as an illustration. But we'll come back to this when we talk about portfolio management and the impacts operationally. The recommendation, um, has shifted from our original recommendation, which was the leaning toward a, um, a load following option. Um, our, our recommendation at this time is to go with a block with shaping product and initially subscribing to a peaking service from Bonneville. And we'll get into the, the specific drivers, uh, for that, um, um, over the next couple of minutes. Primarily, uh, when this is really, um, a summary of the fact that we started, this is really a kind of a bridge slide that says we started initially leaning. Um, and by the way, these were slight leanings. If you recall, there was kind of a 52, 48, one way or the other. Um, we refined and took deeper dives into the, uh, cost, the contract components, the cost determinants. Uh, really took a look at, um, how the different contracts drove our operational, uh, the operational side of E-Web, the impacts of those, the complexities, uh, balanced with the ability to develop countermeasures. And, uh, one of the aspects that we really qualified over the last, uh, couple of months was the, the means of methods that we would mitigate for cost uncertainty under a number of different futures. Um, the, uh, load shaping under one scenario was very, uh, narrow. It was very stable, um, but the, the block with shaping had the ability to be both better and worse. And so we wanted to understand, uh, how practical the countermeasures and mitigations would be to keep that on the positive side of, of variance as opposed to, uh, the impacts from, um, situations that were unfavorable. So that was a, a big part of our deeper dive as well as the operational impacts. And then we also, um, looked at the community impacts. We looked at impacts, uh, and alignment with our strategic work, uh, specifically looking at areas that go beyond our present day load, which we, we know will exist. And, uh, another key driver for the shift in recommendation had to do with, uh, the support of electrification, uh, the support of economic development and which of the two options gave us more flexibility. And so when you look at the, the right side here, um, we, uh, summarized the, the reasons for the change in recommendation being we are still leveraging the, the at-cost federal resource, um, as, as, um, in, in a significant way. Um, while it's available, um, it is capped as far as its future capability to grow. That's actually different in this contract than it was in the 2011 contract, which allowed for a certain degree of growth. Uh, we think it provides better, um, cost improvement potential. There's more upside. Uh, we also think there's ways to mitigate the downside to having some variability. Um, and, and you look at over the 20-year life of these contracts, there's, there's very little financial difference between the different scenarios. Uh, when you back out and change the scale to be full scale, um, a, a few million difference, um, um, or even, even less than that, and sometimes favorable over the, the 20-year life of a contract. And so we, uh, got into really looking not as much toward the, let's, let's find other sensitivities to run, but how does this really align with the organization and the future? And that's where we, we got into kind of the overall strategic alignment and feel like block with shaping, uh, really facilitates, sets up the organization to be, um, capable of supporting economic development, electrification, distributed generation and system op- optimization. Um, oftentimes, and this goes back to some of the commissioners have been part of the strategy for a long time. Um, this notion of synchronizing supply and demand and creating beneficial customer behavior that really can be shared across our organization and block with shaping really provides, um, better links and abilities to do that. One example, I said we would return to this and I just wanted to highlight how we looked at some of the operational changes. Um, this was something that we described early on as being able to, how we would man, the two products would manage peak. Uh, what I don't want to talk about right now is the resource stack, but I want to talk about where E-Web's management efforts would go. And if you look at the two, uh, on the left side, you'll see the areas in yellow kind of highlight where E-Web's portfolio management efforts would fall. And it is true, under this initial sort of one dimensional scenario, uh, load following is, uh, has a simpler objective when it comes to portfolio management. Um, we're basically, uh, managing the, the output that our dedicated resources produce. Now there, there will be variance in that. It, there will always be times of surplus and times of deficit. It, and so that still requires management. On the right side, that management occurs in the context of aligning, uh, our resources, maximizing and optimizing our resources relative to load. And that's under, um, a very initial baseline, no growth scenario. When you add growth to this and this, this upper line will change, it will evolve over time. We just reviewed a forecast this afternoon that shows, uh, summer peaks increasing, uh, 29% in the next 15 years, winter peaks increasing 20% in the next 15 years. So that line is not going to stay the same, um, it will move. And when that happens, the management requirements shift also. And so what we would be faced with on the left side is trying to manage under two different fronts. Uh, one on the resource side and then separately within the constraints that that has, and then also with the constraints of the non-federal resource side. Uh, we would end up with kind of a, actually two or three different constraints we would be managing under. Whereas the right side, um, we would be expanding existing management, uh, of the resource. So it would be a similar management effort expanded to meet the load. Whereas on the left-hand side, there's very different constructs to how you manage it, the lower bar versus how you manage the higher bar. So there's, there's actually a degree of complexity that gets added. And one of the initial premonitions around load following that is that would be simple or simpler and under actual operations would probably not be. The other part of that is we, we talk a little bit about countermeasures and how we would manage volatility. Um, it is true, uh, load following under a number of different constraints is, uh, a bit more stable. Uh, but we also, there are pros and cons to that. It does attenuate some of the signals associated with, um, kind of managing your, your demand side. Uh, we also looked at a number of different, um, options to mitigate for any kind of volatility, tight market conditions, changes in capacity markets, and really looked at what those tangible options would be. Um, not sort of new technology, um, you know, Apple's iNuke or anything that's dreamed up by, by an entrepreneur, but what are the things that we could do locally to mitigate that? Um, those were available, they were practical and it created, um, overall the opportunity to actually improve the cost position overall relative to load following, um, with the peaking service and then through some of the mitigation techniques. And these are, these are listed generically intentionally, um, because there's, there are some details in there that we did not want to disclose in a public forum. Um, but, um, it does actually drive the cost, the overall contract cost down as well as mitigate the volatility. And so, um, those were things that we have, um, assessed, evaluated in the last month and a half as, as part of the deeper dive. Um, and, um, as well as when you start to look at this, and I apologize, in fact, this is, this is bright. And of course, yellow is solar, because solar is yellow. Um, but we, we looked over the life of the, the contract and projected out. Um, and one of the aspects of the decision relates to not just the federal resource, but what's the load of non-federal resources that you have to procure in order to continue to provide the service and value to the, to your community and to your customers. And you, you can see that that varies a little bit, um, with the type of product. Load following on the left, um, block with shaping and a service by itself, um, uh, as the highest one. But then some of the value of the more localized, specific mitigation options. And again, these are, these are technology relationships that exist today, equipment that exists today. Um, and using those, um, to mitigate for, um, resource adequacy, capacity issues, demand response and some of those, those things. And so we did look at, uh, the impact on non-federal resources overall. So in summary, we, we had an initial leaning. Um, we went through a series of deeper dives in a number of areas. Um, looked at the, the contract risks, looked at the billing determinants. Uh, very specifically looked at operational impacts. Um, how different options would mitigate for volatility and uncertainty? And overall, uh, at this point feel like the block with shaping product, uh, as well as a initially subscribing to a peaking service, likely a winter peaking service, since that's where our, our, our peaks, uh, occur. And the meeting and supplementing our resources in the summertime is cheaper and more available. Um, felt like that was the best option as far as its alignment with the organization, our direction, decision flexibility, uh, and the ability to work with our community on some of the things that we know that they're interested and we know that this board is interested. And I'll, I'll just conclude by saying these are both good choices. Um, I think we have found along the way that we're fortunate in the Northwest to have access to, to these carbon-free resources. Um, there have been a series of, of discussions and debates, uh, about the different aspects. I think one of the things I added in the backgrounder was a little bit more description for commissioners on the areas of the contract that we felt had some definitional or operational, um, risks to them or uncertainties, I guess I would call, call those. Uh, we highlighted that they, they take different forms. Um, I'm not sure that we could say one of these products is great and one of them's horrible. Uh, they both have their degrees of, of attractiveness. Um, but ultimately we feel like the block with shaping, along with a peaking service, better aligns with the organization's strategy, the work we, we are doing around rate design, AMI, load management, economic development. We know that there's, there's going to be growth. There's people interested in developing and building in Eugene. And this facilitates that, um, more with a block with shaping product than it does with a load following. And so with that, commissioners, I think we'd like to get, hear your, your thoughts, your comments. We can add, answer questions. We can also, if there's gaps or areas that you would like us to expand on further, whether this is the forum or we can follow up, uh, we, we'd be happy to do that. Uh, we know that there's, this has been a long journey that you've been involved either pleasurably or unpleasurably for, um, um, probably in, in pretty good detail for three or four years at least. Um, and so, um, we appreciate that and would be happy to answer your questions or just hear your dialogue on different trade-offs and options. So, um, with that, um, President Borowski, I'll turn it back to you. There is some staff available, um, at least, at least three people knowledgeable on the, no, four actually. And then there's, and what? And Aaron's on the phone. So he's, he's our, I guess, our contract expert. So there's, there's a number of people available. Really like to get your, your thoughts.
Great. Thank you. Sonia, I see a lot of notes. I'm going to go to you first.
I have, I have several questions. Um, so just so I understand it before we get into kind of direction and our thinking. Um, when you talk about the summer peaking versus the winter peaking, and we, I think there was, uh, there was a slide a few back that kind of showed, um, what it would look like over time and how we expect there to be a 15% change on, or 20% in winter, it sounded like, on, on each side of things. How, how does this one better serve that, that difference versus just the load following?
Yeah, I'll, I'll start with that and then, then maybe Brian can weigh in. Um, block with shaping, um, from an operational perspective, gives us a monthly allocation that we can move around throughout the course of the month. Um, and so, um, it isn't prescriptive in the sense that Bonneville says each hour you have to do this and it's based on history. There's quite a bit of flexibility within the operating realm, uh, to do that. Um, that's on a monthly basis and then we can supplement that with a, in the case that we, we think there's more, um, value in a winter peaking service where we can call on the federal resource so many times throughout the season for things beyond what we would normally be forecasting and experiencing. The reason that we think it's easier to fill the gap in the summer for us is just simply the build-out in the West, um, particularly around wind, solar and batteries. Battery and technology, solar has created, um, a cheaper path toward capacity in the summer than it does in the winter. That's why we would choose winter over summer. We just think there's more value. Um, there's also an annual product. Uh, again, these give you so many shots to use it. And if you spread that over a year versus winter versus summer, our likelihood is we would use it in the winter. And then it would sort of be devalued in the other parts of the season. The, the, the chart you saw there was a, a 24-hour period. Um, so it was just sort of a snapshot example. Um, um, but there is a lot more flexibility than, um, when we look at that allocation from Bonneville, the monthly allocation, moving things around to really optimize our own resources, specifically resources that have flexibility like Kermit Smith. Carmen Smith, uh, has a lot of flexibility to it, um, to be able to shift and move load around, uh, within the periods that we needed. Um, above the contract high water mark, mark, um, that flexibility does not exist with load following. And in fact, with load following, Bonneville would provide us, um, forecasts for our own resources that would be very much diminished and conservative and based on a firm commitment that we would have to make. It wouldn't, they would not allow the use of those very flexibly. So there's some differences in the product there.
So in order to deal with, um, more variance in weather and such, this provides us with the opportunity to, okay, well, we didn't, you know, it, it spiked at the beginning of June and we had two 90-degree days, three 90-degree days. And then maybe it peters out for the rest of the month. So it's, it's an ability to do that kind of within a month. And then what you were saying is in the summertime, we have the ability to have other flexible resources that we can fill in gaps as needed, but less ability in the wintertime because that's still, we're still a winter peaking facility. Even, even when we look out, and again, nobody has a crystal ball, but, um, even when we look out in protections, we're still winter peaking and there's less resources there because it's just cloudy.
Yeah, we think there's more liquidity in the capacity markets in the summer moving forward. That liquidity generally will relate to lower costs, more options that we have to manage our load. We don't have that same degree of flexibility in the winter. We are winter peaking, along with a lot of other people are winter peaking in, in the region. And so, um, the, it will be more beneficial to tap into the federal resource at that time than would be in summer.
Okay.
So the one, uh, piece of color commentary to add, and I, I think Frank's pretty well nailed it, but maybe in my own words, when we're running the modeling on this, the model is picking the least cost resource. We give it the choice of paying Bonneville for this or build something else. In the winter, there are very few like firm, carbon-free resources out there. Like there, there are not green peekers that are cost-effective, uh, for dealing with a 40-hour, 72-hour, you know, winter cold snap. In the summer, the problem is much different. We wind up with these, you know, afternoons that are exceptionally hot. And for dealing with an exceptionally hot afternoon, solar and batteries are very effective. And they're an off-the-shelf technology that simply doesn't exist, uh, to serve the winter. So the model looks at that and says, yeah, you could be, pay BPA rates or here's this other alternative that we think is more affordable.
Okay.
Um, just a little context, like the amount of build-out on this in California is incredible. At last I saw, we had 40 gigawatts of solar, uh, now in the QSO footprint. Two years ago, there was a few hundred megawatts of battery storage. When we visited the QSO in September, they were up to 10 gigawatts. And now I believe they're at 15 gigawatts. Like their pace of storage build-out is amazing.
Are we seeing any impacts from, um, fires in, uh, kind of the, the efficiency of solar and, and any of that? I mean, I know we've, it seems like every summer we're starting to get more and more cloud cover just from smoke. I don't know if any of the models kind of take into that. But even maybe with that, it still is more effective in the summertime.
Yeah.
Okay.
The footprint of it is so huge that a, a local fire would annoy us, but would probably have very little impact on like the entire Western grid.
I think the other thing Commissioner Carlson, um, related to just, I'll, I'll call it diversity of resource is that, that because of the flexibility to manage the resources, the block with shaping really, um, inspires us to do more with local generation, which, um, in the cases- which in the cases where you can have transmission constraints or other things, there's some benefit there. There is quite a bit of diversity in the summer resource blend, specifically with other parts of the West, that I'm not sure one wildfire smoke in a particular area would cause an issue.
That was just two of my questions. That took up quite a bit of time, so if you wanted to.
She has 18 left.
Well, I do have a lot. If we change our, we make this decision, obviously not today, but we go with this recommendation. If we, my understanding is we have one shot to switch it at some point during the contract term, correct? How much time do we have before, if we did decide, how quickly can that decision switch over? Is there any, and is there any kind of restrictions on the ability to make that switch?
Yes, we can switch on even years, and we have to give three years' notice. So the soonest we could switch would be 2032, and we'd give notice in 2029.
Okay.
The other thing about that, Commissioner Carlson, just 2029, we will be barely six months into the contract, into the new contract. So we have a resource management obligation over the next three and a half years. Then we would have a six-month, this isn't working out, and then we would wait another three years. The practical reality is that switching would probably be something that you would want to go through, at least one billing determinant cycle or one billing cycle, cost cycle from BPA. Those tend to be, historically, they've been on two-year cycles if there was any question about the way that the rates are allocated. We don't think those are as significant, that they are a risk. And if we did get into it, it would probably be in the same amount of timeframe. It would probably align pretty well if EWEB had decided that at the end of some of the hydro licensing, not to relicense those, those are decisions probably for the late 20s, early 30s. So that kind of decision aligns pretty well with that.
Sure. Thank you. I'll keep it simple. Two questions. In your background, you had something about RAP and the uncertainty it created. Could you expand on what that uncertainty is and why we're gonna? I guess it comes with the package, but why that, what is that uncertainty?
Yeah, I think there's a couple of ways to look at that, Commissioner. The, how resources get accreditation for their resource adequacy is part of the calculation. EWEB is not the balancing authority. Bonneville is, besides being a resource marketer for the federal government, they're also our balancing authority. And how they credit certain EWEB resources is part of that sort of degree of uncertainty. We think that it's fairly understood as to how that would be, and then how that would be priced. The reason that we left it a little bit uncertain is that right now, the Western Resource Adequacy Program is a program. It's underdeveloped, it's developed. But as new markets develop in the West, they will have their own resource adequacy requirements. So that is not specifically known, what those would be. And so how resource, sort of generically, how resource adequacy is determined going forward is an area of calculation uncertainty. That's gonna be the same case, independent of which product we pick. Because if we're talking about non-federal resources, things beyond the contract high watermark, those are issues that we would have to address as part of being a member of any, either market or balancing authority territory.
Okay, one quick, other quick one. So process. So we say go, and to negotiate. So to me, negotiate means give and take. And so give me an example of what you would give, or what you would take, or would you come back to us and say, this is what they want? Or this is, or we give you carte blanche and you come back with a signed contract and we're done? I mean, just help me through this process, because this is once in 20 years. We've never done it, we'll never do it again. And so tell me what negotiate means.
Negotiate in the sense of a Bonneville contract really means legal language, negotiating legal language around the issues that have already been, at least, defined at a high level. But it might be which products go into which bin, how some of the determinants are calculated. Those are, and mostly, I would say mostly, legal language. I think what we've put in the resolution is, I'll say negotiate, maybe it would be better described as work out the details and execute it consistent with these, the characteristics of the product. I don't know if you want to elaborate on that, or if you need to, we can tap into. Aaron, but anything to add?
I think you nailed it, Frank. A little bit of interesting context is that we'll be part of a pretty small group of folks that take this product, which makes for maybe a different negotiating dynamic. There's 140 Bonneville utilities, and 130 of them will choose load following. On the one hand, that means that they've got some pretty strong horsepower to make sure that the contract works for them. On the other hand, one of those utilities is just one of 130. So if there's something for them that they don't like, tough. The other 129, if they don't agree, then there's probably no change to be made. For us, we will, we will get special attention. I'm not unhappy about it.
Go to my last real quick question.
I was gonna say, the special attention, it is not necessarily a bad thing if you think about negotiating power in the sense that those who are not part of the 130, the 130 tends to be, a lot of those are utilities, full requirement utilities. The ones that are not tend to be the Seattle's, the Tacoma's, the large customers of Bonneville. So one of the things we did consider was, as part of the contract risk, is are we gonna be a lone wolf, in the lone wolf situation? And you could sort of be your, some of the cost analysis billing negotiations that happen every two years, would we be in a detrimental or minority position? Don't believe that's the case. But it does give us a little bit more flexibility to work out some of the things like billing determinants and legal language.
Okay, and real quick, so that follows my assumption that the load follow, the, like, sub and Lane Electric and EPUD were 100% requirements. They're gonna go to load following, most likely. And so they're, because they don't have generation, so they're gonna have a different product than we are. And there's a real reason for that, so thank you, that helps me.
Yeah, they will likely go load following. The decisions that a lot of those organizations make, and in fact, Lane Electric is part of PNGC, which is a conglomerated representative of a lot of those customers, is that what do they do when they grow beyond their contract high watermark? And so they will likely have to go with some kind of either managed product through a PNGC or a tier-two product from Bonneville. Well, Bonneville would just go out to the market. Bonneville cannot make resources. They can go buy resources for somebody else. In that case, we don't see a lot of value that they add. They're basically a pass-through distributor at that point. And so there's some downsides to the tier-two, using Bonneville for tier-two, and those organizations recognize that. But you're right as far as the characteristics of where those organizations tend to fall.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you so much for the presentation. And this is, I've taken the moment to go back and watch some of the other presentations, especially before I was on this board. And so it's been a very consistent and appreciated method of moving forward and being very clear in explaining this. And also, if I was in school for 20 years on this subject, I still wouldn't understand it. So I appreciate you all very much explaining this in a very clear sense for myself and for our community as well. Two questions. So as crystal balls existing and with technology changing and with resources updating, if EWEB is identifying new or improving ways to generate, for energy generation, would that be more challenging with load following than with block with shaping?
It would be much more challenging with load following. And part of the reason for that is, under a load following scenario, when you have other resources, you have to be very specific with Bonneville, what the purpose of those resources are. If they are dedicated to load, you have to dedicate them to load, and Bonneville will use that in their calculation for what they're gonna supply on a net basis. If they are not dedicated to load, it creates a number of other challenges. You can't actually use them for load. You have to use them as access for those generating resources to go to the market independently of your load. And so there's, you meter this and you sell at that. It's very much bifurcated. That's part of when I showed the two different yellow areas. You're kind of managing on two different fronts in that scenario, and that's much more complicated than actually being able to pick and manage a set of resources, which what we would be doing under block with shaping, to meet our load and then manage either the surplus or the deficit as part of that. It really becomes more complicated under load following.
Yeah, thank you for the answer. And on the, I think you answered it, but I'll ask it anyway. On the other side of that, if the needs of electrification or other needs grow, that is also still more challenging with load following than block with shaping, correct?
Yeah, absolutely. I think once we get above the contract high watermark, which is sort of the upper limit of what Bonneville would supply, we're kind of on our own in that case. We could tap into Bonneville at this tier-two level. They don't add a lot of value. We're sort of at mercy with their ability to go out and acquire resources. When we're really, I think one of the things that, where our thinking has really evolved has been the alignment with what we think the community values are around electrification, around economic development, load management, system optimization. And that's very much restricted to what we have today. What we would have today is today. Anything that changes that going forward, especially expansion, would be much more complicated and, in fact, almost disincentivized to do. And I don't, we've had discussions around which of these are more facilitating, which ones create barriers. I know there's a number of opportunities right now. We're looking at load growth in the area. Those become more complicated and restrictive, not just electrification, but all kinds of growth opportunities that the organization could have and the community could have, basically.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks. Good presentation. I do have a quest, a couple of questions as well. You mentioned the downsides. And can you just give an example of how, you said we have opportunities to minimize the downsides? And you didn't want to put them all out there because there's some that are trade secrets or whatever. But can you kind of give us some ideas of how managing the downside is something that's in our wheelhouse or in our capacity at this point?
Yeah, we have a number of large local accounts that really, through curtailment agreements, through load management agreements, would receive credit for meeting resource adequacy requirements. We have tested that. We've tested the willingness to do that and also the potential impacts on the contracts. Those, I don't want to get too specific, but those do create and mitigate one of the biggest original challenges, which I think was identified as this capacity gap. And that capacity gap can be filled by doing local things. And I think I'll probably just leave it at that. And we can, there are three or four specifically that we can highlight that could be used for that purpose.
So an example of that would be a certain user would sign a contract or would be part of their contract that said, you know, if we need to call on you during a winter peak or whatever and have you curtail your operations, then they would be required to do that. And then we can show that to Bonneville and say, this is a way that we can cut 20 megawatts during a peak season, something like that.
That's an example, yeah. I think that, there's obviously lots of details in how that would work. But in general, it can be sort of curtailment opportunities like that. It can also be local distributed generation versions of that. It's based on the ability to adjust on a net basis. And by looking at those things specifically, we identified three or four areas that would be really low-cost opportunities to do that, lower cost than the Bonneville option.
Okay.
I'll just put it that way.
The next question that I have regards to our generation and our, the amount of generation that we're bringing to the table. And at what point do we tell them that, okay, so Kermit has this on its nameplate, but we're actually, do they look back over like five years and say, this is the average? And then also with the decision that I think we're gonna be having to make about Walterville? We've already taken, we've taken Lieber off of our contract. Is the timeline of implementing this and saying Walterville is a yay or a nay moving forward part of the discussion? And, you know, will we be on the hook for Walterville for 20 years, even though we may take it offline?
I'll talk about Walterville. Secondly, you can talk about firm, the firm side of how they allocate our resources, and then I'll answer the Walterville question.
Yeah, let me take a stab at the first half of that. The way that Bonneville calculates our net requirement, the amount that they are obliged to serve is based on our expected load minus the firm capabilities of our dedicated resources. Kermit Smith, on average, puts out 20 megawatts of electricity. It's got a nameplate of 110, something like that. The firm output of it is based on a critical water year, and that's more like 16 average megawatts. And under somewhat adverse water conditions, we couldn't run it up to 110. I believe the official number on that is 60. So that impacts our ability to take from Bonneville. Am I answering your question?
Yeah, I guess I don't want to be dedicated to a nameplate, a nameplate megawatt from Kermit when we see how the actual output that we're getting from our own generation, you know? And then on the other, on the other side, if we could ramp. So if we tell, if they say, okay, you're on the hook for 10 megawatts from Kermit, but we find out that it's a good water year and we can get 25 megawatts from Kermit, are we free to sell that 25 watts? And we're just responsible for putting 10 back to our load?
Yes.
Perfect. That's all the further I gotta go on that one.
I'll answer the Walterville question in the context of not just Walterville, but any resources, any that are on our list and called dedicated resource. Now, Kermit is included in that. Walterville is included in that. And Bonneville does this net requirement calculation, and they do it based on, I don't remember if it's 2023 or not. We are on the hook for that if it goes away. Now, we can do that through a contract. We can do it through a replacement resource. We could do it a number of different ways. But entering the contract, we are on the hook for our firm generation levels. That's, and that's, that has to do with the calculation of the contract high watermark. That's really true, independent of the product that we pick, that we are on the hook for our version, our. Now, it does give us more flexibility to add and subtract resources under a block with shaping than it does load following. If you add a resource under load following, it either has to go to market, it can't go to load. If it does go to load, you have to dedicate it, and then you're locked into the future for replacing that if it goes away.
Great.
So it's much more restrictive, I think, is what I would say on load following.
If I could add just a little bit of, there's kind of a story to tell here in that both parties have a responsibility. EWEB's responsibility is to deliver our dedicated resources, whether it comes from that actual resource or somewhere else. Bonneville's responsibility is to deliver what the contract says they will deliver. So for them, they have the same issue. If Grant Cooley were to stop generating tomorrow, they still owe us, you know, firm power supply. They're on the hook to go out and replace that. If Carmen Smith were to stop generating tomorrow, same deal. We're on the hook to go out and replace that. So both partners can be kept whole, their obligations.
So my overall leaning on this is is to go with the the recommendation. And my feeling on that, one of the things that helped push me to that one is the the top two there, economic development and electrification. I think both of those are things that we're going to be looking forward to in in our community. We've heard electrification is something that is very valuable to our community. And I think economic development is a way that that this community needs to move. Our our area median income is low, lower than the state, lower than the federal. And if we can bring in new jobs, new businesses that may require power, usually the ones that require the types of power we're talking about are doing high paying and and good types of jobs. So for me, those are the ones that help tip it over there. So that's kind of where I'm heading. So back to you, Sonia.
Thank you. Well, parts of my questions got answered, so that was great. Kind of building off a little bit more of the of how the products mesh. So I just want to confirm again. Regardless of which products we choose, the power generation that we have is set. We we have to replace that, like you said. But I thought that with the peaking, with the the block with shaping, we have a little bit more capability to take advantage of using our generation in times when we have need, right?
Yes, that's correct. And the the reason for that is that under block with shaping, we can run Carmen Smith how we want to. We can maximize its production at certain times of the day. For example, with a a load following product from Bonneville, they give us the schedule. And that's going to max whatever they think is the best schedule for them, which is probably going to be more around flat uncertainty than for us. Then we might shape it a little bit more for our own benefit. So there is a diminished value with our own resources and how they operate under load following versus block with shaping.
So there's an upside for us here. If we, for some reason, didn't have Carmen or other generating capabilities, do we have a downside? And what does that look like?
So the downside, if Carmen were to go offline for a period, yeah, under either contract, we have to have replacement power.
So that could cost more. Would it cost more in one scenario or the other? Or would it not really matter because we still have to replace that same?
I think from an opportunity cost standpoint, it probably works out to the same. I will say, I think it's a simpler path under block with shaping in that we can replace it real time with whatever is convenient to us. Under a load following contract, it's it's very rigid. We we have to deliver something. We've got to go through their process to, you know, validate that rather than simply serve our load the same way that we do every day.
Okay. So I'm starting to see more of the upside. I I would like to hear a little bit more about the process and what information. Because I kind, we started out sort of at this path a few months ago. And then there was a flip. And then we went back to this. And I, if you can just help me kind of dig it. And I understand that there are two good options. And so maybe it's just kind of a little teetering. It's not really a big swing perhaps. But, you know, when it's just a decision of this magnitude, it would make me feel more comfortable if we dug into that a little bit more.
Yeah, I can elaborate a little bit and then and then there may be some others that would want to weigh into that. I I don't ever felt commissioner before the initial leaning that as a management team or personally that I had said, oh, this is the one or the other. I I think it was, it was a pretty sharp peak there. And there was a recognition that there was going to be different kinds of risks. There were going to be different kinds of value that was that was going to be realized one one versus the other. The the initial leaning was just that it was kind of a leaning. And there were some things that, I guess, upon further review, and for me personally, it was really diving in to the operational impacts to the organization. Really, how does this manifest itself on the street? On the street or in the in the, on the trading floor or how we approach markets? We also, I think, some of the the customer feedback that we got around the flexibility of it. And and just really kind of thinking about that. And we got further clarification around how the some of the the contract determinants were were built. It it was that in combination was we felt like the downside of block with shaping was that it could have more volatility to it. It it, the other one was more certain, it was more stable, the the load following. Once we dove in to how that could be mitigated and and again, in a practical way, that downside was removed. And so we really felt as a result of that, that it created a lot more flexibility. There was more upside than downside. Yes, it's true. Load following is probably more stable under the constant environment that we're in under today. But I don't think the constant, I I don't know. Did I just say today's world is constant? The the minor volatility that we see today could is going to continue in the future. And so having, there, there was really a qualitative value around flexibility. And and I know that this board has talked about local control. I don't, I looked at local control a little bit differently as a, as opposed to just being able to make decisions around resources. It was local control from an operating perspective that I think ultimately kind of, we had a lot of discussions around those trade offs. And I think that ultimately tipped a little bit from this way to a to a little bit from that way. We also dug into questions that commissioners had around how it would be implemented. And so up until our original leaning, there were some different perspectives out there. Maybe you had formed your own perspective. I'm sure everybody here did. And then it was, it was kind of a tailoring, I guess, that that has happened over the last month and a half.
I guess along those lines, is there information that you expect to get? Or are there analysis that you think will be done that might swing it anymore? This is
I don't, I don't personally, the other two can weigh in. I I think we have really over the last several years and in particular since since January, I I think we have scenarioed and sensitivity this thing to death and looked at all the different kind of options. I know this group over here is probably going, yeah, we're really tired of it. And ultimately, I don't think it came down to the difference between, oh, there's this number versus that number. I think we, and and probably it's expected that that they're very close because at the end of the day, we're still getting 80% of our supply from a single supplier. It's what are we going to do qualitatively from a product perspective that gives us the most strategic flexibility going forward? And and there's not a scenario that we can run still that will tell us any more than we know already. We we know brackets, we know mitigation, we know sensitivity. What if load grows faster? What if load grows slower? What if the markets are tight for capacity? What if they're not tight? We've, they have and out there have done and provided us with all of the things I think we we need at this point. And I don't see another scenario that that we would run.
So I guess along the lines of the scenarios, one of my questions was just, are there scenarios? So you run hundreds of scenarios, thousands of scenarios, maybe. I'm assuming this scenario is kind of a 90% plus is the best option in in that case. Are there extreme scenarios or scenarios that give you pause that say, actually, this one wouldn't have been better? Like, there are situations in which, you know, we could foresee in the future that actually the other one would have been better.
Go ahead.
Might I take a turn, Frank? Yes, I, and that is a extreme that I that we tested and I believe is in the deck. And that would be if we were to have some kind of extreme capacity pricing in the future. Like the thing that Block was shaping doesn't deliver as much of is that rapid capacity. If some of these, you know, alternative solutions that we've found were to not come to fruition, if we found ourselves in like a severely adverse, you know, capacity market.
So it's like batteries are become a problem.
Yes.
We can't get lithium. I don't know. They start
Yeah.
Yeah. You're going down. That's sort of
I'm being glip here, but I really do want to understand because I, it's such a major decision that I I just want to understand in which, where the risks are for each of them.
So the the upside capacity cost is the risk. And that was also our focus in the countermeasures. So Commissioner Borowski, you'd asked last time what my recommendation had been. And I had shared that it was to go with load following and to get ready to switch to block with shaping at the first opportunity. The reason for that was that I I saw block with shaping as a qualitatively superior product. But I, while I could see a path to it being less expensive, I wasn't positive we could get there by Q4 of 2028. With the work that we've done since then, we've looked at several different options. We've racked our brains. Each of these is worth, you know, a seven figure value on average and probably double that in risk reduction. Yeah, we can land this. We can make it both qualitatively and quantitatively superior.
I think also Commissioner Carlson, there are certain sensitivities that that Brian mentioned where you can say, well, this one, this one responds to that sensitivity more favorably than the other one. I think that the challenge to that in in all of the different scenarios is that sensitivities don't happen in isolation. And so, for example, if you have a of a tight capacity market, there was likely growth. And which one of these simultaneously can handle growth better than the other? So you're, you're dealing with bands of different sensitivity. Some of those, in many cases, are at tension with each other. And so we, we ultimately went through a lot of different combinations of sensitivities and landed on what we thought was reason, a reasonable future as a baseline and then sort of turned dials around that. The, but at a really a capped market, extreme capacity costs, the load following product is less sensitive to that situation. Now, less sensitive means a few million a year. So 2 million a year for EWEB is a 1% rate impact. So it's almost within these margin of errors that when we take a step back, we're talking about. I I did, we focused in on all these things and you saw variance. When you take a step back and do it, do a zero at the bottom and you realize that's 92 million, you kind of go, okay, this is a pretty tight band of sensitivity that we're looking at.
Yeah, because the other, if we, can we go back to that other slide that has the the range for each of the options?
I will see what I can do. This one?
Yes, that one.
Yeah.
So this is the high and the and oh, it's
Yeah, I mean, it starts at 85 and goes to 99, goes down to zero. And you can kind of, those really worst case scenarios are some of the sensitivities in the square boxes. We didn't really comment on that too much. And you can see there's a pretty tight band across there overall. There's, there's some of these on, on the right side is is actively managing that. And I think we would actively manage. So what, pros and cons of of the two, and you asked which one might be different in a different scenarios. I I under, if if you're a good organization, you're managing that risk in whether it's load following or, and there's different kinds of risks. So the, the the goal would be to, this is not just, oh, one decision. We we set it and forget it. There's things that we would be doing to look at scenarios going forward and various action plans not associated with Bonneville that will be talking to the board about in August or September, actions outside of the Bonneville contract. So more to come there.
Just to make sure I have that that chart correct. So the three graphs that are on the right hand side, the darkest one is just block with shaping. And then the one to the far right, is that adding the plus loads or how?
No, these are, so we actually on on this graph internal, we had the very specific different countermeasures associated with each one of those bars. They're, they're all three block with shaping and a peaking service.
Oh, okay.
But there's different countermeasures that we've done. And so there's, it's combinations of different local countermeasures that we could do. So those are just different, different versions of a approach to to mitigating the the volatility.
Yeah, so we're looking at a difference like if you were able to hit the best case scenario, that's 89.8 per year versus, I mean, 92.1 on the load following. So it's really not
It's a pretty tight band. And part of that was, you know, the the reason I said we can sensitivity this thing and scenario it to death. And it seems like there's a pretty tight band. How does this fit strategically?
Pretty tight, but then there is more lower potential
Yes.
on each.
Yeah, that's absolutely true. And that's that that's a great conclusion. One is very narrow with not a lot of potential to it. The other one provides potential and it would be up to us to realize that potential.
To keep costs lower. I mean, that's, that's ultimately what we want to do with any product that we're choosing is whenever we have the opportunity to keep the costs lower for our customers. That's always our goal.
Right.
So, I mean, if we can both deal with variability and have resiliency in it with that option and have the potential, since the upside is not that much, then then making it more to the, you know, the lower cost option.
Yeah, the other way I look at this, Commissioner, is that the block with shaping and PLVS gives us more tools to do that. And especially under conditions like electrification, load growth, economic development, you know, all these things that maybe we don't know going forward. There's just more arrows in the quiver with that product than there are with load following.
Is there an upper cap on how much the load are, you know, for in terms of like economic development? Is there a cap on how much benefit we get from this model in terms of growth?
Well, the, under a load following scenario, the tier one product is capped.
That's it.
So anything above tier one, the the contract high watermark, we're going to be out there managing, procuring. If we leaned into Bonneville for that, that's an option. But it's probably a more expensive option.
All right, second round, John. I'm trying to be brief. So this is a 20 year decision. So we're making decisions for future boards. And I know that some future board may determine that Carmen doesn't make any economic sense and they want to sell. Or we have a contract coming up this year, a Pacific, that is coming right around the corner. And that may not be in our portfolio or the UFO's co-gen. I mean, all those different decisions that can affect our capacity to produce peak and everything else. Are any of these products or any of your recommendation more restrictive or less restrictive on allowing future boards to make those decisions? I mean, if if the board four years from now says Carmen's upside down, let's sell it, which may make economic sense, is there restriction? They can't do that if I doing this?
I, that particular scenario, we can decide which resources in one case are dedicated to load or whether how we're using it in in the other case. They relate to our overall net requirement from Bonneville. Whether it's Kermin Smith and or some other resource, that's future boards free to make that choice. And under either scenario, there's, there's not a difference. I I think the, the value of some of those resources, whether there's some of the local resources that that you mentioned, how those fit into a profile, how those are used is different under the the two scenarios, partially because how we address capacity is a little bit different between those two. But future board But future boards will, will probably have. I, I would say overall likely more flexibility under a block with shaping. Because we will have demonstrated the, the peaking and flexibility of Carmen specifically, if that's what you were asking about. Whereas if it's operating under load following, it's, its performance is going to be very much attenuated and driven by a schedule from Bonneville.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to support also what Commissioner Robsky said and support the recommendation. So that's, I'm done.
Thank you. Um. Are you hoping for just questions tonight? Are you hoping for feedback as well? I'm just.
Both, I guess. And, and you can actually ask Sonia questions if he, if you would like. I mean, I just, you can ask each other questions.
I, I appreciate it. Yeah, I, um, I, I'm gonna, I have a question and a comment and I did this before and so I hope it, it lands the same exact way. But um, are there questions that we as a commission have not asked? Or are there comments that you're hoping to make to highlight to us and or anyone who's listening uh that, that hasn't been addressed yet?
So, some of the questions that, that come to mind to me that, that haven't been asked by the board. And it's, it's really an ancillary kind of question is. The, the detailed actions and what happens between now and 2028. So, so this is a contract that starts in 2028. There's a number of different things that we have to do to prepare for that. Um, the, um, we still have a contract that we're operating on under now. There's a series of actions that we have to, to execute to get ready for the new one, at the same time not cannibalize the existing one. And so, um, one of the, the things that, that we think about is what aligns with our sort of organizational strengths and weaknesses now. Uh, what bridges that, um, that period of time, um, better than the other. Uh, it's probably easier to bridge to a block with shaping and active management of that contract than it would be the other one. Um, uh, neither are impossible to, to manage. Um, and we will have a series of actions that, that we talked to the board about that's related to this, but. Um, I, I think that, and, and that, and, and you, you know, there's, there's always an organizational psychology component. That you haven't asked about, um, that just something related to which of the, the products facilitate sort of focus. Or I, I think there's opportunities with both, although one is more attenuated than the other, which is load following. So it, it kind of has a tighter boundary. Um, in some ways that can be good and all can be restrictive. Neither of these is business as usual and we need to uh work on our change management to be able to make sure that we're preparing ourselves. For 2028, um, uh, independent of which product it is. Um, and so, um, I, I, I think that we, we also have. Um, an, an internal communications education process to go through. External communications outreach, um, what does this mean uh for, for customers? Um, for different kinds of opportunities, for demand response, for all, all of the products and services that we've talked about. What does this mean for that? How does that manifest itself? Rate design, all those things that you're intimately familiar with at this point. Um, and so, um, a lot of the questions that come to mind for me, um, this, and it really kind of started out this way. This is one piece to managing a supply chain and, and it's, it's just one piece. There's a lot of other things that, that, um, um, relate to that. We, we've tried to look at the, the impact of that. Um, but those, those are things we will expand on, um. In the next few months.
I appreciate that. Yeah, I, I mean. You and your team, you're looking 20 years into the future, trying to figure out what. What the federal um process might look like, what our environment might look like, what uh exists in energy generation. What even EWEB might look like, and that's a really hard path to follow. And so I appreciate it. It's, this is, there's very clearly considerations for so many different aspects of that. And I, uh, I hear the, the, the perspective that load with following provides a focus and provides a clear direction. And provides like guardrails to ensure that there's a, a very clear path forward. But I think we're, we're heading into an environment in which flexibility will be incredibly important. Um, and the ability to adjust and Brian, you've even commented adjusting on the fly same day. If there's a significant challenge, if something dramatic happens, um, I think that that, that is just a, a tantalizing. Sort of goal to, to have, to, to be able to be flexible and, and um, bring that to ourselves and as a community. So, um, I'll be supporting, uh, unless there's another huge uh, uh, change in between now and then, I'll be supporting.
I really hope not.
I really hope not. Yeah. I hear that, but I'll, I'll be supporting staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Commissioner. I, I, I do think, um, one of the things that, that you, you touched upon is. The, the fact that it, in one option or another, there could be guardrails, there could be sideboards, guidance. I, I really think that, um, it's up to the board. It's up to, you know, the leadership of the organization's staff to, to do that under any scenario. Um, I mean, we, we, we know that both of these contracts have to be managed. They, they have to be managed with a very clear set of principles and outcomes and intentions. And those are things we are going to have to refine and under either product. And, and so when do we get into situations when we want to procure a resource and when we don't? These, these are things that have to be actively managed. The block was shaping to me feels like it's, it's a more active, more, I was going to say offensive. It's, it's more offense. The other one seems defensive almost. Let's get our ducks in a row until we know what we do. That seems a little more defensive. The other one seems like, let's go on offense. Let's control our own destiny. And let's, let's take control and own that. And that's, it, it has that feel a little bit. Um, just from an organizational psychological perspective.
If I can add a, a, a difference, um, it sounds more like the difference between actionary and reactionary. And I think that, that I think is a, that I think is the goal. So, thank you.
Okay, I have a couple more questions and then a comment. Um. There's actually one quick question. So with load following, or excuse me, with. The recommendation, how does that play with our ability to hedge like we have been in the past? Um, we've been fairly successful with our hedging program over the years. Uh, is that something that? The recommendation would give us more opportunity to lean into?
If I field that one?
Go ahead. I will embellish probably.
Um, I do think the block was shaping very much maintains the same spirit of what we've been doing. Uh, because our product from BPA would, it would meet our load in an, an average month, which is different than what we get now. We would expect our, our book, our trade volume to get substantially smaller. We wouldn't be dealing with like the spring runoff that flows through our, our sliced product, right? Like we get a lot of surplus slice that we're out marketing in the spring. We would no longer get that. So our trade volume would go down pretty substantially, but we would still be trading. We would still have the opportunities to hedge where we think it's appropriate.
Okay. Um, so that, so that leads me into. The other reason that I feel positive with going with the recommendation and, and that's the organizational side. We've built it, from what I can see, we've built a, a really functional organization. And part of that is our training floor. It's our hedging. It's our, all of the things that are going on in these, in these rooms in this building here. And to me, it's not just, I mean, those are people that are doing that. And if we could go the other way. Frankly, I, I think some of those people are going to go away if we went with load following. I mean, I think that the, the jobs that those people are doing are, are vital to not only them, their families and our community. But also are the flexibility that we have. Going forward, whereas you, you mentioned that if we hit a peak and we had to go out and procure that. Are we going to have the people in the office upstairs that's going to have the, the knowledge and the ability to be able to do that? To the best for the organization. And I don't want to lose that. Um, and so that's the other part of it that helps me lean into that. I see the quality of people that are working in this building and working for this organization. And there may be changes, obviously, you know, Brian alluded that we may not be doing quite as much. You know, trading and so that there may, there's obviously going to be gives and takes. But I think the organization that's been built that I've seen over the last five years is strong. And being able to give up that knowledge just to be able to say, well, I don't have to worry about that because uh, this is my, I've got load following. And I can be, I can be Bletchley Lane or sub or whatever and, and be a lot leaner and meaner. That doesn't feel to me what EWEB is. And so that's the other part that helps me lead into it. I just wanted to say that.
Commissioner Borowski, a, a couple of the sort of uh key interested parties from a customer perspective. Commented about their perceptions of EWEB strengths and part of that is, is what you mentioned. Um, there, there is, there would be more risk with the load following option, in particular, two forms of risk. One is um transitioning from the existing contract to the new contract. Uh, that would be one. Um, the other one, um, which I think is something to, to manage going forward is. Um, as the, as Brian mentioned, as the book changes, we also have to be very intentional with what our. Um, desired outcomes are. Um, it, it may not be to leverage lots of length at different times. It might be to optimize our delivery to load. Um, and, and minimize that or, or grow that. I mean, we have to, we have to be really intentional with. Um, how we want to develop those capabilities, refine those capabilities, especially. Um, as we look at what our role might or might not be relative to the development of new markets in the West. So there's, there's some areas there, um, load following in the near term. And I say near term being the next three to five years does not have the flexibility. Um, that block was shaping has in, in intentionally making decisions around that.
All right, Sonia. And we're at seven minutes.
I mean, my, my last couple of comments were actually relatives of the other questions. Uh, logistically, what are the differences between what our current is and what the recommended is? So I think they kind of dove into that, um, a little bit. Although you were talking more about kind of. How we get there and I'm thinking more about. How does this actually operate differently than, than how um, this other product would? So I heard that you said fewer trades and that sort of thing, but can, can you give me a little bit of a picture?
The operation.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, what does that look like? How is it different?
So what we get today, we have slice block where half of our output from Bonneville is just a flat block. And the other half is slice, which is meant to be like a. A virtual version of the federal hydro system. It operates within the constraints, you know, the actual federal system. If there's an outage uh at one of the generators, then we lose generation on slice. If there's a whole bunch of snow melt, then we get additional generation through slice. It's very much like owning our own little like, you know, few percent share of the federal system. Under block with shaping, Bonneville's obligation to us is based on our forecasted load. So if our forecasted load for December is 325 megawatts, making up a number. And our dedicated resources add up to 25, Bonneville is going to deliver us 300 megawatts. But we can shape that day to day within prescribed limits. We can run it up to our one and two, our median peak, or we can run it down to 60% of that 300 megawatts. I can do math. That's 180, right?
It's probably more the other, but I, I think I get what you're saying.
So we get this, this pool of energy that we can dispatch within the rules.
And so from a staff perspective, I mean, that's, that's still balancing. The load, we're still involved in it, whereas load following, we don't have the staff as much following that. We are told you, you have this amount and if, if our demand goes up, they provide it up to a point.
Yes. Under load following, staff would be focused entirely on meeting our dedicated resource obligation. So if the contract says. EWEB, 5pm today, you're going to deliver us 80 megawatts because that's what your combined dedicated resource tax says you can do. Staff's job would be to deliver 80 megawatts. Doesn't matter if Carmen's offline. We'd be out, you know, in the market.
Finding.
Finding it somewhere.
Okay.
But we would have this, uh, this much smaller responsibility.
And under that scenario, it's, it's more about managing kind of the day ahead and that day. Whereas we now, uh, under the present scenario and to, to some extent with a different kind of resource under block with shaping. We are several days, weeks ahead. I mean, we're managing throughout the course of a month or even a little bit more around a season to, to your point. Um, so it's the, the amount of, of management, uh, it's just more flexible. I, I, I think it's very restricted under load following. And if you don't hit your target, you're faced with pretty severe penalties from, from Bonneville. They will, they will take the worst of a couple of different scenarios and charge you for that.
Okay, so if, um, it seems like it's, you know, if, if we did load following, following, we lose a lot more staff. So it's a lot easier to.
We certainly, it's a lot of responsibility and.
Scenario, um, from where we currently are, but once we're. I mean, if we went to load following, it would be a lot harder to switch back because we would lose a lot of the other capability and internal knowledge that we have.
Yeah, that was certainly something that was on my mind, thinking about the strategy of going load following and switching.
Yeah, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to ramp up again because.
Uh, how would I keep staff skills fresh? My, my favorite analogy on this, and maybe it's just because we're down in, you know, the university corridor of Oregon here is, is beavers. They really have to chew on something to keep their teeth from like growing out of control. Uh, our wholesale operations are very much the same. What would we be doing during that four years to keep their teeth, uh, sharp?
And, and the, again, we have to have good staff to get that lower, that lower piece. So how, you know, how are, so it's great to have the human resource person here. How are we developing those capabilities? As folks transition on, I mean, it's just, I, it seems to me that we have, we can, that we've talked about this before. We have an aging, uh, utility employee resource and we need to be bringing in. People to get up to that skill level to be able to hit those numbers. So anyway, those are the things that I.
I think Commissioner Carlson, it's, it's exactly, um, I mean, it's spot on that sort of the, the questions that you're asking. I think a lot of this, um, still holds around uh staff development, succession planning. Um, it is easier to, to transition from a staff capabilities where we are now. To managing within a new market construct than it is to just go out and try and, I'll say, grow it on your own. If, if that goes away. So from a decision and staffing perspective, it is more. It, it is more flexible to go with block with shaping than, than to, um. Uh, really risk the diminishment of staff that comes out of load following. Um, now we also recognize that it, it's a position like any other. You have to recruit effectively. You, you have to be an attractive employer. Um, the, the flip side of some of the other things is, is Bonneville is in a tight labor market as well. And leaning into them may or may not solve that problem over the long term. Um, we, you know, those are things we hope are, are, uh, temporary. Um, and, and they'll, they'll do the same thing.
Great. Thank you. I feel very comfortable with the recommendation. Uh, I appreciate you indulging me in the questions. And I can see somebody's done. So, okay, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, one, one more comment, President Borowski, um, just for the, the, um, public to be aware and also for you to be aware. I do have a, um, private appointment set up with Commissioner Schlossberg. Uh, before the, uh, July board meeting to go through a lot of, of these same kinds of, of pieces of information. And answer any questions that she may have as well. So just for the record.
Great. Brian.
Frank, I'll say just one more inspirational thing. Um. Just wanted to say how tremendously proud of staff I am on this. Uh, someone who wasn't called out earlier and is uh, remoting in from, uh, from Portland, Aaron Bush. Incredibly talented. Uh, we were very lucky to have, um. A huge strength that we've been able to flex in making this pivot was how far we've come on the, the analytics part of this. A couple of years ago, we were doing. a long-term modeling through Aurora, and to do a a fresh scenario run, the computer had to go for a week. We've now gotten to the point where I called these guys in for an eight o'clock meeting. We talked through an idea and they say, yeah, can I have that to you at three o'clock? That's that's how we were able to run these analytics and make this pivot in such a short runway. We're in an awesome spot. So thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. And with that, we'll close. We'll see you in a few weeks.